Okay, I would like to call the Board of Education for February 26th, meeting of order. Joelle, would you please do the honors of introducing our guests to the pledge?
Leading us tonight in the pledge, we have two students from LT Ball. And they are Abby O'Parkes and Harrison Parnish. And they are representing the pods of Ms. Amber Wampler and Mrs. Heather Kerr. And we hope that this will be the beginning of a new commission. And we welcome our students to lead us in the paces of their formal rise. So Abby and Harrison, enjoy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, excellent job.
And if you are free to be excused, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Mr. Stevens, go forward, please.
Mr. Fano.
Present.
Mr. Dennis.
Present.
Mrs. Dahl.
Present.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mrs. Heather. All present at counterpoint.
Alright, the first item on the agenda is communications and board member reports. So student achievement?
Well, in 2017 and 18, Mrs. Dunaway did an excellent job of being our student opportunity liaison. And she brought a lot of interesting and, you know, really timely guests to our board meeting to tell us information about what was going on in our district. And tonight, we hope to start some new conditions with that as well and build upon what Teresa has started for us. And tonight, we're welcoming members of our high school student senate. And those officers joining us tonight are Mackenzie Dietz and Dylan Blair. And if you guys would come to the podium, they're going to give us a brief summary of some things going on at the high school.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Dietz, president of THS Student Senate. And we just wanted to give a quick rundown of what's been going on at the high school. So on February 17th, we had our eighties-themed turnabout dance. And approximately 168 students attended, and that was from 8:00 to 11:00. And last Friday until this Tuesday, we are having a banner signing that will be sent to Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida to show our support for what has happened. We also, in the future, are going to do our mock crash on April 19th, which is the Thursday before prom. That kind of has students aware of what will be happening. Like if you were to get into an accident during prom night with just different substances or different tragedies. And then we also have the musical, which is coming up. And that is March 15th to 17th at 7:30. And March 18th at 2:30. And that musical is called Hello My Baby. And some popular songs that people may know from it are Hello My Baby and Ain't We Got Fun. It stars Melanie Dodson and Alec Group. Also, the THS Inferno has a couple of students on March 9th, Laura Fink and Jessica Miller, who will go to Wright State to deliver TED Talks to TEDx Youth event. And both girls submitted presentations based on essays published in last year's Inferno, and they were selected to go to Wright State. Also, on March 21st is the annual Night Write at TIP Roller Mill from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. And that is where students will go to the roller mill and just write or do different activities to have creativity flowing for our THS Inferno this coming year.
My name's Dylan Blair, I'm the Student Senate Vice President. And I'm going to give you guys a little update on athletics. For indoor track, Katie Taylor and Kaylee Tittle are headed to state. Katie will be competing in the 1600 meter, and Kaylee will run the 800 meter. The boys' basketball team lost this past Saturday to Carroll 61-46, which ended their season. The girls' basketball team will play tomorrow night in the sectional finals versus Shawnee at Ken Ridge. Wrestling-wise, Caleb Blake and Blake Ballard both advanced to districts, which are this Saturday, and they have a chance to go on to state if they both place in the top four. Blake placed first in the sectionals, and Ballard placed fourth. Swimming in state, junior Alexis Cook finished eighth in the 50 free and tenth in the 100 free. And our bowling team finished their season 12th in the sectional tournament last week.
Thank you.
Thank you, a lot of great things.
Alright, next thing is the strategic plan update. We've been working on that for a couple of months now, seems like longer. But Joanne, please give us an update.
Well, Katie Parker, the principal of Nevin Koppick, will not be here with us tonight. So I'm going to do my best to summarize what has happened at this point. So back at the end of 2017, the board at that time was working with Steve Horton, who was a consultant to help us with developing, identifying what are the areas of the strategic plan that the district wants to work on. And he's from the Ohio School Board Association. And so at that time, four pillars were identified in the area of client, climate and culture, student achievement, communications, and facility planning. So January 8th meeting, our board received some information from Liz and Dr. Kumpf about strategic planning, and they gave us, I guess, a guideline on what we should be doing as far as developing those pillars. And at that time, we invited members of the community who were interested to come and join those committees. And so those committees have formed, and those meetings have started. And at the time, there was a suggested timeframe to have this sort of wrapped up and presented, perhaps at our, probably at our March or April meeting. Well, the groups are meeting, and there are good engagement happening, and there's good discussion happening. And all of that dialogue is working from the established mission and vision that the previous board and the previous, what was your committee called? Strategic Planning Committee had, right. So those things had already been developed, and so these groups picked up from there. At this time, I think we're exploring professional assistance, see what that might do to help advance us along. And we want to keep the focus, I think at this time, based on our community engagement session on facilities, but continue to work and move forward in those other pillars. And I wanted to open that up for us to get your feedback on that suggestion and see where we might go from here.
I think that's a great suggestion. In the groups that we worked in, there was just real juicy and thick conversation about what, you know, student achievement and opportunities means. And we didn't feel like we could do as good a job as we know we can do in such a short timeframe. You know, Mr. Beerhoff brought up a good point, is that we need to do a better job getting students involved in the conversation. And the timeframe was so quick, the turnaround, you know, initially was so quick that we kept having to just kind of feel like we were going to have to push things off to make that timeframe. So to have more time to get the kind of input that we really want to make a better document would, I know for my committee, be appreciated.
Any way else I can contribute about that?
I fully support the group that we need to take some more time. And this is a document that's going to follow the board, lead the board for the next five years. So we need to spend the time to do it right, and we need help to do that. We need to, we need to bring that onboard. So, you know, support, support that plan, if that's the feeling of the board.
Yeah, I think that March 9th for the Climate and Culture Committee was too rushed of a target deadline. And it, we needed a target deadline to keep us moving, I understand that. And I do like the idea of having a professional come in. We've never done this before. It's been like, I think, about eight years since the district has done it. So any feedback that we get from a professional to keep us going in the right direction is, you know, only a positive, so we should definitely look at that. I guess that's about it, really.
And it's a big job.
Yeah, it is a big job, oh, I know. For one thing is, because we, you know, we reached out to OSPA with Steve Horton, and I felt like, instead of going from A to Z, we kind of went from Z to A. We skipped the teacher data, we didn't do a SWAT, we didn't do an internal SWAT or an external SWAT. Students, parents, there needs to be five different groups of people that we're getting information from. Staff, students, parents, administrators, board employees. So we kind of missed that step. So there's a lot of valuable information that isn't data. Or, in my opinion, we're kind of guessing. And I don't want to guess on a five-year plan.
Yeah, I agree. I'm all for taking a little more time, making sure it's done right. Our committee will, or my pillar, our subcommittee will be happy to support that, so.
So I'm going to suggest that we, for this time, extend perhaps our deadlines to maybe June, the June timeframe. This will give us time to explore professional assistance and see what resources we might be able to find. But I don't want to encourage that the committees stop. I want to encourage the committees to keep talking and keep meeting, because the dialogue is important. And we're also getting a lot of valuable feedback from community engagement about facilities. But there's other feedback that's coming from that as well. And I know that walks for more than just that forum to reach out to the community and to the stakeholders that Teresa mentioned in order to move this forward and continue in that area. So if we can all agree on that, I think that's, we should move that for now and focus more on facilities.
Do you have a feel for when we might have a decision on professional? When we might bring that person aboard, and when the committee should plan? Or maybe some assistance from that professional?
Well, we have a meeting.
Within the next 30 days, within?
Yes, I'd say within 30 days, we'll have a much clearer feel about that.
Yeah, I think we should meet with more than one person, because it's, you know, we want to get, a lot of it's chemistry, too. You have to be able to work with that person and get a good feel for them, their experience, price. And we have to tell them where we are in the project, because we did sort of start in a weird spot to see if they're willing to work with us in what we've done without scrapping everything, but still move forward in a direction that's going to have a positive outcome, so.
That's the feedback I'm hearing.
Yeah, so hopefully, we can get three people in here in the next three days and meet with them. We have one person scheduled already, so.
So I'm hearing people feeling rushed. I'm feeling that we need some exploring the options for professional assistance. And we want to recognize that we may not have used a linear fashion to arrive to the points that we have. But I don't think that we're so far in that we can't stop at this point, regroup, and salvage what we have. I think we have a lot of good, so we want to pick someone that says,
okay, you know, we understand, you understand what you did, but let's move forward and get a working document going.
Okay. Alright, moving on, superintendent, assistant superintendent's report.
Alright, let's start with Board Docs. Board Docs is an electronic system that we're looking to, we actually have been trained on it as a board and as district administrators now, that will allow us to move toward an electronic agenda. And we're excited about that. It will provide public access to our agendas. And we're looking to actually begin to initiate that on March 12th for our workstation. Jim Sagona is going to come up, one of our administrators, and kind of show our community how to log on, what that page is going to look like.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Kumpf.
Hello, I'm Jim Sagona. This is how you access Board Docs. If you go to tipcityschools.com, and if you take a look here under our photos, we've always had this tab here, Your School Board. And down on it now, it says Stay Up To Date With Board Docs. You can click on this large green and gray button, and you'll be taken to Board Docs. This is what our page looks like. Upcoming meetings will appear here in the center. Some featured documents over here. I'm going to click on a meeting here first. So this is actually what a regular monthly meeting would look like. We did use this one in training, trying to replicate last January's meeting. The featured ones will be up here at the top. But you can click on this menu and see historic meetings as well. There's a button here to print it, or you can just simply view the agenda. And it'll actually break down for you everything that happens inside the meeting, much like the paper copies you have in your hands, which we look forward to no longer printing. One of the nice features of this tool is the ability to have attachments. So you'll be able to click on something like the monthly financial report. It'll show you right here a link to the monthly financial report. This was December 2017's. And you actually get access to those attachments right there, as well as, we'll start recording the voting there on the system as well, so you can see who made the motion, the second, and how everyone voted. So this will then be archived over time. We're excited about those features. There are other features as well, though, including policies. All of our school board policies that you still are, but have been hosted on our NEOLA website, now available here, and can be searched as well by search of the policies. I found this interface far more usable than NEOLAs. And lastly, is the document library. This is where we will put a lot of the historic documents that weren't created in Board Docs, like prior meeting minutes, monthly financial reports. The goal is that everything you have now is still absolutely accessible. We're just moving what portal it's in. And I've created these two featured docs here for you. One, how to use Board Docs. It's a great little walkthrough of the menus. And if you've done my three-minute presentation, you can look at that, as well as a full year's worth of meeting schedules, which you can print or say or what have you. So again, that's available on tipcityschools.com, our homepage, right there under Your School Board. So let's start, March 12th is the goal.
March 12th is the goal. So we'll sign that, that'll give us kind of a ready start at a workstation then when we get to our regular board meeting for the month. At least we'll have a partial meeting under our belt, which should help us. Appreciate that for mentioning this on here.
No problem, thank you.
We're excited about it, and I think, after we have our learning curve, I think it will be helpful.
Dayton's used it for several years. Does it work on all platforms? Because still in Dayton, it only works on their desktop. You can't use it on a plot, you can't use it on a tablet or a phone.
No, you can use this on a tablet. I haven't tried it on a phone for the interface, but it's HTML5 compliant, so yeah. It should be fine. We will have computers in front of us.
Correct.
We still love you, we just, or I will be. Yeah, we do, we do have a free and open Wi-Fi network here. So if you want to bring your tablet to this meeting and look at it, or you can print it in advance, or sit there with a full laptop, whatever you see fit. But yeah, we will have devices for the administrators and board members, because they can follow along and see the attachments and everything as well, and
And watch the vote. Come in and watch the vote.
All of this photocopy will happen, that excites me.
Jim, may I add that the video recording of the meetings will also be located there?
That is the goal, that is the goal. Yes, yes, that's the goal, is that you'll be able to click and view the meeting as well.
Are we going to have better audio?
No.
Fair enough.
That part's not you.
Closed caption, can we do closed caption?
Board Docs solves some things. Can, yes. I don't know that anybody's got time to sit there and type word for word. So, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, curriculum, math, and Mr. Kumpf.
Well, I'm going to put a little bit of science in there, too. But math curriculum, we're still plugging ahead. We are really in, I think we're in a great spot, K through 8, we know where we're headed. We did make a trip, actually a really, an exciting trip to Indy. A few weeks ago, Mr. Beerhoff, myself, and two teachers went to Indy to look at something that's, it's called Agile Mind. And if you want to look that up, it's, it's very different. There's nobody in Ohio currently using it, but there are numerous districts that are looking at it, because it is a, we want to stay current with our instruction. That's one of the things that is our vision, and that is something that does, it looks at math in a different way. And we want to, but we also want to make sure we have teachers that are prepared and ready to move ahead. And we're not going to dive in completely, we want to do little bits at a time. So that's something we're exploring. And then Wednesday, we have another group coming to share with our high school teachers. So trying to just shore up exactly where we're headed with the 9 through 12. And then science, we met with science, I met with science teachers on Friday of our professional development day, and had a really good discussion. That's, that's our next year curriculum study. And I always like to get a jump on it in advance and start those discussions and dialogue. And the middle school and high school teachers had some really good dialogue. Because we recognize, that's one of the first things we do, is look at, where do we see that we have some gaps and some things that we need to shore up? And that's kind of what we took a look at on Friday, to just get a little jump ahead of where we're headed next year. So that's math and science curriculum. And then I'm also a wonderful personnel. So we have two people here, actually two, but I think two are together. So we have a need for a long-term band substitute, starting tomorrow. So we have, we have, we have a teacher who's going on maternity leave. We have a bunch of few teachers going on maternity leave, it seems like.
Don't drink the water.
So we have, Alexander Linden is here, and so I'll let him introduce himself. Anthony Haslam.
Just kind of standing here with a
Yeah, just kind of standing here.
Um, I'm Alex Linden, I'm from the area. Went to Wright State, graduated in 2014 with my bachelor's in music ed, and then 2017 with my master's in music performance. I've been teaching in the area for a little while. Started around 2014, teaching at Bethel, and then moving on to Stebbins, Northmont, Van Dally Butler, Middletown. I'm currently an active sub in Stebbins and Northmont and Van Dally Butler. I've also had a helping hand in starting an after-school band program for Dayton STEM. So they get a bunch of kids coming in from other school districts that did have music programs, and unfortunately, they didn't have one there. So the company that I work for, Manual Creative Arts Academy, was able to get a contract with them to have a couple of teachers come in and teach. So do a band program there.
We're grateful he's available, because he'll be here with us till the end of the year.
Starting tomorrow, did you say?
Yes.
At, how is it, middle school?
It's a middle school and assisting at high school.
Okay, gotcha.
Welcome, Alex.
Yes, thank you. And then we had a position that was, that will begin next year, is 50% social studies, and then also some aid time in that as well. And we want to thank the board for approving that position. And we've selected Cindy Wilbermit to fill that position.
Hello, everybody, I'm Cindy Wilbermit. Most people in this room probably know me. I've been around quite a while. This is not home for me, but I've been here since 1989, when I graduated from college. So it's been a while. I went to Capital University, and in the meantime, I've taken classes online to keep my certification correct. I'm coaching volleyball at TIP Middle School, I've been doing that for eight years. I've done a lot of subbing in TIP schools, and done a number of long-term subs. Currently, I am a full-time aide at the middle school this year. And I totally enjoy my time doing that, full-time, every day, knowing where I'll be. I'm excited to get a chance to teach next year, so I'm excited for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
And we have one more, and she's going to be filling in at Nevin Koppick in the cafeteria. And I know her first name is Ashley.
Yes, hi, I'm Ashley Hurtman. I've, I'm pretty new to TIP City. We've lived here for three years, me and my husband. We have two, we have twin daughters in kindergarten at Nevin, where I've been subbing for the past two months in the position that I'm filling. So I'm excited for the opportunity to work for TIP City Schools. Joelle, here's, thank you.
You're welcome, Ashley.
So we'll have, we have recommendation, and we'll run it a bit later. But thank you for making the time to come to see me, and you can be excused.
Thank you.
We'll see you all in the afternoon, the classes. Alright, next item is just school safety. I just want to take a minute really to talk about that. As we know, across the nation, there's been a lot going on. And each and every day, it seems like we have a new piece of information on somewhere in the United States that there is a concern. And so I just want to take a moment just to kind of highlight things that we do have in place. We're always looking for additional ways to make sure that our schools are safe. We also know that it's difficult, because sometimes children, people find way, no matter what. But we do want to do our diligence. So we do have visitor registry, many of you are very familiar with that when you come to pick up or drop off a student. We have identification badges, and I just took mine off, but we have identification badges that each of our staff members wear, as well as our guests, as they sign in, and our substitute teachers. Surveillance cameras, we have those in all of our school buildings. We have many of those in the entry areas and then other selected places throughout the buildings. Controlled access, like for our entry to be from the main entrance. And that's where the sign-in, and really, that's where that initial access occurs. We do utilize what we call off-duty police officers, they're present in our building, and we have that each and every day, and greatly embrace that. That's been a partnership with the city of TIP City as well. We do drills, and as you know, we do, you know, the fire drills, the tornado drills, but now we also have, of course, the safety drills. The state mandates that you do three of those, and we do those diligently and look at ways each time to improve and learn from those. We do train our staff, we have what's called an active shooter training that we have conducted, and we continue to work on. As new situations occur, our law enforcement and our schools learn new pieces. And so that helps to inform us, and we keep learning. We have a crisis communication plan, and that's a piece, once again, that's required by the state. But that's something that we keep up to date, and it is an important referral point and resource for us. And then we are investing, and we'll see that shortly after we get back from spring break. It's called Safe Schools, which is an electronic way to be able to submit information of concerns. And then that allows us to be able to see that. That can be done by name, or that can be done anonymously. And so we're, that'll be something that will be coming on. We'll be spending some time really informing our district about that. And we might be at our March meeting, or April meeting, one of the twos, we will actually be showing, once again, on a board, how to access that, so that we can walk our community through that process.
Can I ask a question? What was it called again?
Safe Schools.
Okay, because I've probably want Say Something app, which sounds so similar that I've been researching, but that's what I brought tonight, so I asked. Thank you.
Yep, yep. And there are, we have been utilizing pieces to the state, but really have not had much response on that. So I'm hoping that by rolling this out and being a little bit more informative about it, that, and then we will have a presence on our own website, that people will be able to click and go to.
Thank you.
And it will be available for all of our devices, such as phones and iPads as well. And then finally, we do have 911 radios, as well as electronic outreach within our buildings. And that just gives us a few minutes head start as far as activating the process with our local police. And as we know, all those minutes are precious when you really have a crisis. And later in the meeting, we'll be looking at March 12th. And I will be hoping and requesting that our board would look at the possibility of us spending a portion of that meeting on, at workstation, on Safe Schools, and really providing additional information, and hopefully walking our community through the Safe School app that we have. But also just all the aspects that I've just spoken with you about, and expanding most of that. Any questions? I know, it's, it's a piece that's on all our minds right now, for sure. Alright, the next piece is about GWOC. And so GWOC discussion, I'll kind of kick it off. And I definitely would like just to involve them from the board as well. GWOC is the conference that we presently are a member of for our athletics. And it's been a great experience for us. When you move from one conference to another conference, most bylaws ask that you take two years for the process. And so if we had a two-year lead into getting to GWOC, and this is essentially our second year in GWOC. GWOC right now consists of 20 districts, so it's a larger group. And so at this time, there's been discussion among the members of the group that ultimately, it might be time for alignment. And so essentially, we are, are part of what's called GWOC North. And it's been very helpful to us, just for driving very helpful to us, uh, just for driving distance and for close rivalry, uh, among districts that are near us. Uh, and so, uh, 10 districts, uh, are looking at the potential of stepping away from the Gwoc conference and then forming, uh, a conference that aligns with, uh, basically our, our size of schools. Uh, one of the things that we find is, and I think I have a paper with me just looking at the size, for example, Centerville, an amazing school district, but they have 1,024 boys and 1,006 girls. And, uh, Tipp right now, we have 296 boys and we have 276 girls. So you see that is quite a difference. Both wonderful school districts, but quite, quite a spread in what we would call as far as, uh, enrollment size. And so it's things of that nature, uh, it will help us also with balancing your schedule. Uh, we call it a smaller footprint, so working with 10 groups instead of 20, uh, will be a positive piece as well. Uh, and, and we know that our sports that we play mirror theirs as well as our high school mirrors what they have, our, our middle school mirrors with what their middle schools are offering as well. So it makes a nice, nice connection. So, uh, this is newer information, although has, there has been, parts has come out in what we call Friday board update to our board as well as, uh, several of the group of 10 have now brought it toward their boards and so there has been, uh, information in their local newspapers. But I would just like to open discussion up within, uh, the board if they have any questions I might be able to help you with. I know Mr. Faust is here, he'll be helpful too, uh, if there's anything that you want to discuss. At our next meeting in March, I would like to propose to put a resolution on for vote among our board for a decision about us having the ability to, um, move with the 10 that predominantly, uh, are with, uh, the Gwoc North, um, to form this, this new conference, uh, which would occur in the next two years.
Do you know why we originally joined Gwoc? What were we seeking?
Uh, I was not here when that took, took place, but standing from the outside, I would say probably one of the reasons is because of competitiveness, uh, the tradition of our athletics here at Tipp Canoe. I think we wanted to make that jump up playing against the Pickleas, the Sidney's and that just to up our competition level. Um, and also, also the distance, uh, travel between CBC compared to the Gwoc. Um, but, uh, we do compete in the Gwoc, uh, with some, some sports with the Centerville's and Beaver Creek's and that, which does benefit us. Um, but if you look at overall athletic department competitive balance compared to the Centerville's and that, there is a big discrepancy, uh, in that. But I think just because of that step up of competitiveness and then the travel as well.
So do you think, um, and, uh, this new conference would maintain that competitiveness and, and address those travel issues?
Yes, I think, uh, it's going to address the same reasons why you moved into the Gwoc originally. We're still going to get that step up in talent area, uh, playing against the Pickleas, Sidney's and that competitive, and then also definitely with the distance, uh, and that the travel is still going to be lower. Our kids aren't getting home at 11:30 at night anymore after a midweek game. Um, they're getting home at a reasonable time and able to still do their homework and that, so, uh, I think so. Uh, as she stated, we're happy with the Gwoc. I love the Gwoc. I love to set up the Gwoc. Uh, unfortunately, there's a lot of discrepancies between the big schools, small schools has been going on for many years. Um, I think now it's got to that point where now schools are saying, okay, now we have to look out the best interest of our communities and our kids, uh, and it's time for a split. Went through the same thing in Cincinnati with a big conference. That's what happens when you try to get 20 schools of different school sizes. No one's going to see eye to eye. Um, so, but with that change, we're not driving this change by all means, um, but what the best interest for our kids and community is to go with the schools of the North Division to keep that rivalry. We have a great, uh, rivalry right now with Butler, uh, in the works, um, and we would love to continue to have that.
How many districts have already voted, do you know?
Uh, yes, Sydney has already voted, Pickle has already voted, uh, Butler will tomorrow night will be theirs and then Stevens, Matt River has already voted.
But we do have 10 confirmations that all 10 schools are going to do this. It's just a matter of time of presenting their board with it and getting the official vote. Um, and also in the lights of it all is Lebanon, who is on the other side of the 10 schools, has already sent in their letter to the Gwoc that they're leaving, the Gwoc and going to the ECC. Um, so there is a lot of movement already within this conference and, uh, it's best to move so that way we don't get left out, uh, because it would be horrible to be left out and have to be independent.
Yeah, that's not fair.
And March 31st is a very important date because there's this two-year timeframe and because of the bylaws, that is a cutoff date. So our next board meeting for our resolution and to gain any other information and questions you might have between now and then will keep us right on schedule and we'll be able to get our, uh, information into the Gwoc about what our.
One feedback that I heard about a lot of, um, parents that were attending, they had more than one child in a sport, you know, a middle schooler in a high school was the cost of admission. I heard that time and time again that it was, they felt like just outrageous. I don't know, is it too early to know what the, if the cost is going to come down as far as admission?
It is too early to know what the new cost of league, but one of the reasons why we're splitting is because that some of the schools wanted to jack up the ticket prices on us again.
Again.
And that's why we said looking at our communities and that, that that's not fair. Yes, some communities, as in the Centerville's and Springbros' might be able to afford that ticket price, uh, raise, but as communities as ourselves in the North, no way. And it's not fair. I mean, I think it was a ticket price from the CBC to the Gwoc anyways, just because of Gwoc prices. And then now, year and a half into it, now we're asking our community even, no, no one's going to go to a high school football game for $10.
Right.
And, and that's not fair.
Right.
So.
And that cost for junior high games was super expensive too. I mean, everything.
Right. So I can't guarantee it's going to go down, but I guarantee it won't go up because that, that was one of the reasons why of the split as well. So can't always believe what you read in the papers.
Right.
Uh, Cindy, the way I understand it, 2019, 2020 would be our last season in Gwoc?
Uh, no, um, with the, the light of the two years, it was going to be 2019, 2020 season, uh, but with Lebanon removing themselves from the Gwoc, um, the bigger schools now have decided that they're not going to let us go any earlier, that they're going to hold us to that two-year bylaw. So you're looking at the fall of '20. The fall of '20 is when we would start the new league scheduling.
Okay, so 2020, 2021.
2021.
Will be the first season in.
The first season in the new league.
New league.
Yeah, so 1920, last year Gwoc.
2019, 2020 will be the last season in this league.
Yes, yep. That's what, unless something changes, unless, uh, somebody says, let's just get it over with.
So are they going to bump the price up again going into this next season?
Bump the price up? No.
No.
No, no. We're, it's going to stay the same, so. Because that, that would have to go to a vote and you have, and there's.
And there's enough people that, okay.
Right, yes.
10 to 10.
Yeah, so.
And presently, we are the smallest district in the Gwoc and will be the smallest district again in the new league.
Right, right.
Although like you said, we compete well in, in.
Right. But if you look at, uh, which the state, there, there is a thing as competitive balance and if you look at the state and the state started putting that into effect across the board in tournaments and that, uh, our competitiveness in Tipp, I mean, we're one of the top, even though we're small, but we're mighty. And we're winning a lot of championships and competing i- in the conference and that, so, uh, which is a good, it prepares us playing against the Division One, Division Two schools then when we go into tournaments and that, so.
Well, thanks for doing your homework on this and all the research and bringing it to us so that the public knows exactly what's going on and that we made the decisions for a lot of different reasons and mostly to benefit the students.
Right.
And I like not getting home at midnight and your child is doing homework for two hours. That's not fun.
Right.
So the travel time is a good reason.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Other people?
All right, and then just my last item. I know that later we'll be discussing the, the community engagement, the facilities being that we have, but I just wanted to tell the community how much I appreciate the turnout for that evening that we had, as many as 100 people there and it's exciting to see our community and our staff and our administration, everyone, our board coming together for a strong discussion and just, uh, looking ahead and for the future in our district. So thank you for that.
I'll speak on behalf of the board. I think I can say that we're very pleased by the turnout of our, our staff and who are in attendance. We really appreciate that support.
All right. The citizens' comments, we have none this evening? President's comments, uh, I would reiterate, uh, you know, appreciate the support that we had from the citizens of the community, um, for our community engagement session. Um, it's a very positive sign, um, that there is interest in, in some renovation or, or the building process, uh, replacing some of our, our buildings and, uh, we're excited that, uh, there is that interest. It helps, uh, help us shape the, uh, the future of the district, so. Uh, we'll talk a little more about that in a few minutes. Um, I also would reiterate, uh, Dr. Combs' comments about safety. Uh, we take that very seriously. Um, we have a, a very strong program, uh, drills and so forth, the safety plan, um, and, uh, we're here to protect this, the, our children, um, in these buildings, so, uh, don't take, uh, the, the news lightly that happens out there and, uh, we, we are doing our best to stay on top of that, so. Ratification of minutes, we had a busy, busy, busy month or so.
I've, because it's got January in there.
Four sets of minutes here to approve. Uh, you've got a packet, uh, in, uh, in the board packet of minutes. Uh, it was almost the biggest document in there. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any corrections to the minutes?
I have one comment.
Okay.
Uh, in the January 8th minutes.
Got it.
The standing committees, I'd like to propose that we call those superintendent of performance committees. Yeah. People would all agree on that.
Instead of saying standing committee?
We'd like to call it superintendent of performance committee.
I think we did superintendent trade committee.
Yes.
Superintendent trade committee. Thank you for catching that.
Any other, uh, corrections?
It's like the first time I haven't had a correction. So disappointed myself.
All right, well, that's just a sign that Dave is doing a great job.
Yeah, there you go, Dave. I don't have a correction for this. It's a lot of minutes, babe. Yeah, it was a lot. It wasn't as careful as normal.
There was a lot. That's why we didn't get January, if you had a January.
It was a lot to read.
All right, um.
Let's take a vote on that. Uh, we, we should vote on these from now on, so.
All right, so we will, uh, take a vote on, uh, call roll, uh, for all four sets of minutes with the correction noted.
Okay. Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes. Minutes are approved.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we are on to the treasures report.
All right. Well, lucky for me, uh, December, uh, January was a pretty boring month. It was pretty eventful. Uh, there was only one large discrepancy between the prior two years, but I'm going to stop talking.
Right, I was going to say, did, did talk about the monthly financial report, but I would like a motion to approve the monthly mo- financial report.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So a motion and a second from Corinne and Teresa. All right, Dave, please continue.
All right. And as I was saying, the biggest difference between the past three years was this January, we did a request for advances of our property tax payments from the county auditor's office, which was almost the exact dollar amount of the difference between the three years. So, um, other than that, our revenues were coming in normally, our expenditures are going out normally, things looked really good. Uh, I'll point it out again, uh, interest rates have gone up. Uh, while that's good for interest rates for us making money from the banks, uh, if we want to go out and do loans, interest rates are going up. So, I'll just put it there as well. Are there any questions that the board members may have that I can answer on these financials?
I just want to clarify that we made that, we, we voted on that in January so that the, um, the money would be released. It would be advanced and we would get it.
We can get it sooner, that's correct.
Yes. It was our, it was our money due to us, so no reason for someone to hold it. We should just get it put in our way.
And we will see the release of the remainder of the money early March.
That provided us a little bit of income on that in the form of interest income by getting that month, that a month earlier. All right, uh, any questions or comments? Other kind of questions or comments? Call roll, please. Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
And Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Yeah, motion is approved. All right, next is the appropriation amendments for fiscal year 18. I'm going to have a motion to approve those. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second from Andy and Jill Wellen. Dave?
We're only three changes this month. Uh, LT Ball wanted to account for their little musical they're going to be putting on. Uh, the revenue, anticipated revenue expenditures were not known at the beginning of the year and I advise Mr., uh, probably he's going to kill me. Yep, Mr. Baggett has, put that on when you know. So he's done that and then we just had some increases for the high school boys tennis and girls tennis teams. That's it.
Questions? Hearing none, please call roll.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
That motion is approved. And the last item under treasures report is approval of the then and now attachment four. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I will second.
And Teresa and Corinne, motion and a second. Dave?
And there's only three POs this month or, uh, that were paid in January that were over $3,000 that we need to approve. Two of those are because the, we did not receive the invoices. And when we, we called them and said, hey, do we have invoices coming? They said, oh yeah, here you go. So I can't go back in time and approve a PO for an invoice we never received. And then the third item was the chicken dinner, the boys' basketball chicken dinner. We got the, we put it on the books in November, well, basketball team put it in November, we just didn't put a PO in place, so.
Ah, so that's your department.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's. No, no. It's all good. It's all right. He had the money.
Every year.
Yeah.
He was a successful.
We just never know how much.
Yes, it was.
It was a good amount.
Any questions?
All I've got.
Hearing none, please call roll.
Uh, Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, old business. Thought we'd take a little time and talk about facilities in a community engagement session that we had, uh, a couple of weeks ago. I believe everybody got a copy of the comments that were written, um, at the various tables. We need to talk a little bit about, uh, that, uh, what we heard maybe since then, as well as maybe, uh, a next plan of action, uh, for, uh, where we go, um, as it, as it relates to facilities. So, with that being said, um, as I looked through the comments, uh, I seen a lot of good information. One of the things that excited me was I did see a lot of people interested in the permanent improvement fund, um, being continuous. Uh, that is, uh, very exciting, but, uh, uh, we heard that, uh, there in the, uh, uh, in that session. You know, we've been doing that every five years, uh, for the last forty years, I think it was, um, to maybe get rid of some voter fatigue and levy campaigns and so forth. If we could make that continuous, uh, it looks like the, uh, that group that was there anyways was interested in, in supporting a, uh, a permanent, uh, levy, uh, or permanent improvement. So, um, I, I've seen that as a good sign. Anyone else, uh, other comments, uh, that, uh, we'd like to talk about, uh, with regard to that evening or, or comments since that evening?
This is just a short one, but I, I think that it's important. There are three words that we tried to put out there, the plan, invest, and preserve. And so, uh, even on our slide presentation, we tried to highlight those words, looking at where, what was the planning aspect, what was really investing in our present facilities to essentially preserve them or preserve good instructional setting. And part of that does involve, uh, the projection of new construction as well, of preserving truly our LT Ball and our Tippin School or the two schools that we've been spending a lot of time talking about and the reasons why, and also what those improvements might look like as we would preserve those. Invest in them to preserve them given more longevity. And then the other aspect was, uh, truly the need that still exists for a pre-K through three, with the site really not being determined at this time, uh, that that would be, but the new construction itself, uh, still existed because those buildings are older in age and have different kinds of construction concerns. So, I'm just kind of recapping that very quickly. That's the high spots, but I think that's important. And I think that those three words that were chosen were important to us as, as a board and administration and committee that worked on the, the slideshow, thinking that as we looked at what our input was back from, uh, our community when our last bond issue did fail, that those were things that we were hearing, that, uh, our community likes for us to take care of our buildings and make them last as long as they can. And, uh, even though we have two that are very old and that they, they have served us well, that we do have other buildings that with some additional investment that we may be able to extend their life.
One thing that I got from several different people is they really appreciated at the end, somebody kind of threw a zinger at Gary about the OSFC dollars. And they said, wow, I wish I would have known that on that last levy because they never, we never really probably did a great job explaining that because you talk about so many other things and then it pops up at the end of a conversation. So, they really appreciated. They felt like they finally understood why we would potentially decline that. So, that was important to them. And then the other thing is people really want to, um, it's great that we're gonna have a plan for potentially a pre-K three, but they wanna physically know where it's gonna be, not just, oh, we're doing a pre-K three. Physically, where are we gonna put it? And that was really important to, not just the people in my group, but other people that I talked to afterwards.
Well, I think that walking away from that session, I think the most important thing I heard or saw in these White House was a location for the pre-K through three. And we're gonna have to spend some time, um, looking at various options of where that could be. I think there's, there is a lot of options of what we can do with, uh, with, uh, classroom space for pre-K through three. And, uh, we actually, we do need to look at, at all of those options and, and see what makes the most sense. So, um, you know, I, I would tell the community that, uh, we, uh, that's why we didn't walk in the door with, with a proposal to tell you where it was. We don't know where it is. Uh, we want your input. We wanna involve, uh, everyone and make sure we, uh, we make a decision that makes sense for the community. So, stand by. We said this is gonna be at least a twelve-month effort to figure out what we're doing. And, uh, you know, a key piece of that is location. And, uh, so, any of these community engagement sessions or a survey or various other methods to, uh, um, figure that out is forthcoming.
I have another question. The other thing that got brought up quite a bit is people do understand now why we're not doing the pre-K eight because the high school won't be paid off till twenty twenty-four. So, they understand that now. What about the option of a pre-K six and turning LT Ball into a seventh and eighth grade building? I hear a lot of people saying they think that separating the seventh and eighth graders and doing a pre-K six would solve a lot of issues. And that's a question that I got asked quite a bit that night as well.
Well, if I understand correctly, I think that we also need to continue sharing information that the pre-K through eight had challenges. And one of the biggest challenges would have been the debt threshold.
Correct. And, yeah, until twenty twenty-four, we can't consider that because we can't, there's the debt threshold.
Correct. Because of the high school being paid off. And, um, we need to further engage our community. Whether, we had good turnout at this initial session. I hope that the board's committed to also getting out more and interacting with our community. And I hope that our community will contact us so that we can get that feedback that represents all the stakeholders, uh, in, in not only what would you support? Where should it go? What are the needs identified? And this really just dovetails back to the importance of us somewhat tabling our strategic plans so that we can focus on facilities and do a good job of addressing those needs because those are the most current priorities. One of the other things I heard, um, from the table I sat at and others was safety and how we might continue that conversation about safety in another community forum. It would be something I would like to see us try to do. And, uh, how we might link that then to facilities and how our current facilities, uh, could probably be enhanced to make sure that we're offering a safe environment for students and our staff. But there are limitations to our elementary schools that investing a lot of money into those schools may not address those needs. Might address heating and air conditioning and windows and doors. But those elementary schools in order to address safety concerns, I hope is on the minds of everyone.
I've had a couple of conversations with Dr. Gump and Gary about, um, uh, another community engagement session very soon, um, with the topic being safety, um, to, uh, begin, uh, providing the community some, some information about, um, what we do today, getting some input about what we might be able to do tomorrow, um, improve our safety. As, as I said in the president's comments and as Dr. Gump alluded in her, her, uh, report, uh, safety is on our minds and, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, our children are safe. We also need to make sure that our staff is safe. So, uh, I would think that, uh, we're looking at setting up a, a session for that very soon. We've also run a couple of dates, uh, but, uh, haven't really nailed anything down yet. But, uh, coming very soon, I think, uh, about when we might do that. So, uh. Stay tuned to the newspapers. I'm sure they'll cover us, uh, well. And, uh, we'll get something out to the community here soon.
I really thought that there was tons of support for the preserve piece, the let's get in there and make these schools, um, a safer and just more comfortable learning environment for all the students. And I don't know that we had a timeline for when we could really, you know, put that on the board and, and move forward with it. But I think it needs to be something that we do sooner rather than later so that we can make sure that these kids have a safe, comfortable environment to learn in.
There was definitely appreciation for if we did elect to preserve those buildings, the idea that that would not add, uh, any, any levy or anything like that. It would be with existing, already voted funds. I think there was actual applause from that, if I recall correctly. So, people did appreciate that as well, that we're moving forward, for sure.
So, piggybacking off that, in addition to learning more about safety, I have also heard, and I'm sure you all have heard as well, is that future discussion in public forums to talk about, um, the pros and cons of taking state money and how to educate our voters about levies and the impact of those levies and decisions that are made through those votes. It's certainly a topic that I think we should revisit soon as well.
I said the first topic was location. I think the second topic was Ohio Facilities Commission and Funding and how to, uh, how to move forward with, uh, with that. So, I, um, I think we're gonna spend considerable amount of time on both of those topics, especially, um, as we move forward. All right, so, I appreciate all the comments. As far as moving forward, um, is, is there some desire, um, uh, what is the desire? Do we, do we ask, uh, Dr. Gump and Gary, um, to look at, uh, setting up another session, community engagement session to deal with some of these, these couple of topics? We talked about location and, um, well, some funding. Is there another topic that you wanna explore before we get into, uh, into that? Possibly configuration, um, is, or grade banding, is, is, uh, Teresa, uh, alluded to, that we might, uh, spend some time, um, looking at and then providing, uh, some community engagement on that? How would you like to move forward with the next step of facilities?
I'd like to decide whether or not we're gonna invest in the current buildings before we decide the other piece. Because that's like, that's a huge piece. It's gonna take months and months and months with, I mean, if we do it right, to get all the stakeholders' opinions and their ideas of where they want it, where they don't want it, why they want it, why they don't want it. That, that's gonna push off providing safer schools and more comfortable learning environments quite a while.
I would say the majority of the comments that I read were that, that, uh, in this document were that they were interested in preserving or continuing the use of those two, uh, two buildings and, and investing in those two buildings. You know, uh, I, I guess my opinion is that, uh, maybe we need a, uh, one more confirmation session with, with regard to that. You know, I don't know that what new information we're really gonna be able to provide that, that Gary didn't provide, um, there. Uh, I think we have a few questions about how do you decide that you really can, uh, make those buildings last another twenty-five or thirty years? What is, what is the, and Gary talked about his gut feels. He walked through the buildings, but, um, I think I heard some people wanna hear a little more data oriented instead of just our gut, that that's what, what, what we see. You know, I don't know what kind of timeframe we'd need to provide some of that data, get some facts to, to, to bolster that, uh, that situation. I mean, I, I concur with, with Gary's comments. The times that I've been in those two buildings, I see, uh, significant life still in those two buildings. I'd be hard-pressed to, to tear those two buildings, uh, down. But, uh, we should probably, uh, you know, provide some, some real facts, some real data.
Yeah.
To the community that, that can substantiate, if you will, um, the, uh, to proceed with, with keeping, uh, those two buildings in our master plan.
Have we asked the middle school staff what they think? The teachers that are there in the building every day?
We did have a presentation. We, we had a presentation in all of our buildings and there was dialogue.
But like an actual survey where we asked, you know, every single person, basic few questions?
Not, not a, in, in survey, no.
Okay, I think that would be important because a lot of times in a group environment, you're not gonna really say what you want because it's, there's peer pressure, right? If all your staff members and coworkers and friends raise their hand and they're all looking at you. So, I just feel like sometimes that, that's not the best environment to get true feedback. That's just my opinion.
I think both are good ways to get data. I, I think Gary did a fabulous job of justifying the need. I trust the assessments. Clearly, this is something that he does every day. I think that I heard, uh, interest in spending a little bit more time on how it'll be financed. And so, creating some information based on what you're saying and how it'll be financed would be something that I think people are looking for in the next meeting.
As a member of the facilities planning team, is that gonna be done before we choose to preserve those buildings? Because you think you need a plan before you preserve? But that's just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it's, it, it's gonna impact the master facilities plan if, if the board chooses to go ahead and, and commit to those two buildings. That is, uh, an absolute fact, um, that the master plan will need to consider and adjust to. I think that's a board decision. If that's what the feeling of the board is, um, the administration is in support of that or, or thinks that's also, uh, what is best for the district. You know, that's, uh, what we're gonna have these discussions about and, and, uh, confirm with the community. But, uh, you're absolutely correct. If we commit to those two buildings, um, it does impact a master plan.
I think also the timing, there's always these timing issues. But one of the aspects when we're talking about preserving that was brought forward that truly for some of those, uh, I'll call it improvements, that, uh, if we would like to have that available as our students return in the fall and the number of, it could take place, that we do have to be realistic in making sure that those that we would set forth to do, you know, to do that, that they have the right amount of time to get that done. So, uh, I think that, um, probably our April meeting would really be the, pretty much the last stop. If, if we didn't have a decision at that point, I do not believe that they would have adequate time to get done what they need to do, just to get their planning, their supplies in and, and all the extra things that they would do because they'd have to really, uh, begin probably doing some things in the evening. But definitely as soon as students set foot out of school, they'll be needing to go pretty full bore in order to get that done.
As I understand from Gary, it's something that has to be done anyway.
Right.
I mean, we're definitely using the building next year, obviously, so.
Yeah. What, what additional data? I mean, 'cause I, I think Gary did a great job explaining the life of everything that we currently have.
Yep.
And the, and the expected life of things that we're going to replace. You know, so I'm just wondering what, like, additional data would look like to help us form a decision other than, you know what I mean?
I think it might be an estimate of the cost of a pre-K through eight or a pre-K through six. You know, I mean, just so we can have that.
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah, that's probably what we're looking at is what, what does it take to replace those buildings? If we had to replace those buildings, um, you know, does that make sense? Does it make sense to go down a whole new building path? As, as, as we just mentioned a few minutes ago, we are committing to those two buildings. You know, are we sure that we couldn't build new instead of committing to those two buildings? And are we comfortable with those two buildings giving us twenty-five, thirty years down the road? You know, or does it, is, does it not make sense to do that? And really, you know, take more time? I'm not saying that it's still, that may not be where we wind up, but not take more time to look at, um, some other options before we, uh, commit to those two buildings and preserving, uh, those two buildings? So, um, you know, in the end, it may still be the same plan.
Right.
But, uh, do, do, are we ready to make that commitment now? Or do we spend some more time doing that and gathering, uh, more data or different data to, to justify which direction we go?
Sam, sorry to say something to you here, but, uh, one of the things I heard is I think it's a great idea potentially to preserve those buildings. But I felt like it was just the have-tos and, uh, those type of things to make them preserve. But if you were to invest additional small sums of money, make them even more inhabitable and better environments for kids, you know, for twenty-five years. So, if there's additional things, like, one of the things I heard and I didn't even realize is that the walls in LT Ball are kind of paper thin. If you put real walls in, those things.
I mean, that is part of the, the plan that we talked about that evening. It was the second year of the plan, but it was to put permanent walls in, get rid of the, the, the paper-thin walls and eliminate the walkthroughs between the, the classrooms that currently exist and make those, those. Yeah, so, um, yeah, that, that, that is part of the plan, um, that we talked about when we talked about preserving, um, the buildings. So, uh.
But to replace those buildings would be a bond.
Absolutely.
And we still have the issue of needing, in my opinion, new elementary. And so, what will the community support? They've entrusted us to make decisions with the permanent improvement money. And these decisions would not require, um, going to the voters because it's permanent improvement money that has already been invested and we need to take care of the buildings that we have. So, I'm not saying for or against. I do like the idea of using data to, uh, help us make that decision.
And finding out what we can do now, knowing that we're not gonna have, whatever building we do decide to build is not gonna be built for years from now anyway. So, what can we do? What can we do right now going into the next school year to make it a safer, um, environment? We're conducive to learning. We're conducive to learning.
Well, I, I don't want us to forget a sense of urgency for our elementary schools and for the children who go to school there and for our staff that work there. That is not too far off in this board's future to address. And our community, I hope, will be on board to support that.
I do think one of the pieces that I find very exciting, and I know you can see Mr. Fisher's passion, is the, the opportunity to be able to do something relatively soon instead of five or seven years from now that some, we could actually do something. And it's looking at how those PI dollars are allocated. And, and it's exciting to be able to think that we could have students that are in classrooms that are uncomfortable on second floors and, and different areas that, that, that could be relieved by having, you know, a different HVAC system, you know, availability. So, and, and I, I guess part of it is when you are in those buildings and you walk down those hallways and in and out of those classrooms and you see, you know, every student with a water bottle on their desk, and rightfully so, they need it. I mean, you know, it, you just, you know that learning's occurring because they have great teachers, but the amount of learning occurring is not as great as it could be if they were more comfortable. And we do ask ourselves overall, unless you're in a specialized position, maybe in a foundry and in different situations where there's very heat intense climates, that it's part of the environment of your workspace. A great deal of our workforce does not go into, you know, 89 degree plus up to 94 degrees and, and on a daily basis, you know, and, and perform their jobs eight hours, seven hours. So those are just things that it's, you know, I often say that if, if we had, we were at the ballot and even on the one that, that didn't go, it, it went down significantly, that it would possibly be a different story if it was on one of our days where it was so terribly warm and we know that it's so uncomfortable for our staff and our students that when we get into November and we're wearing a little sweater and it's just more comfortable and it's not freezing cold yet either, it doesn't seem as, as significant and prevalent in our mind right on that given day. So, uh, I, I agree. It would be exciting to be able to do something and to do something as soon as this summer so that we would have students and staff actually feeling the results, the positive results next fall when they return.
But to continue to develop our plan of long-term, which includes how we'll continue to seek permanent improvement dollars and how we'll continue to take care of our buildings, including some of those cosmetic things I think that we would like to see in those buildings. But also what will ultimately be asking the voters or how we'll address our elementary schools. And don't want that to get too far away from us.
I agree.
It's a commitment that I think we all share.
All right, so maybe to summarize a little bit, I think the board was probably interested in another community engagement session in the short term or near term, specifically dealing with the, uh, those two buildings and committing to those, preserving those two buildings. I also think that we probably need to explore one more time the continuous PI fund. That also needs, again, to be part of the topic. And I think, you know, Teresa's idea of a survey of, of both the teachers at both buildings, the middle school and the, and LT Ball, might be a, a good data point for, for us to have as we, we look at this project.
We build Broadway, Nemeni, and Middle School.
For the survey?
For survey.
No, it's really, I think, middle school and LT Ball. I, I don't think I have any trouble with.
There's no saving, there's no saving, never. I just need to do nothing.
Got it, got it, I, I, I see what you're saying.
Hey, watch it, that's my school, okay?
Oh, that's right, well, hey, I just helped you, we need to do nothing, Gary.
And so I think I'm also hearing somewhat of a side-by-side comparison. It's going to be easy to read slides that say this is the cost of investing to preserve and this is the cost to replace. So, Mr. Segone, can you just get right on that, right?
That, that's the lead time of, or what it takes to put something like that together. But he does an amazing job and our, our team actually did a nice job last time.
Excellent job.
The question is the timing. I know we have a workstation that is scheduled for the 12th of March and whether that really provides the time that we need to do that. But yet, once again, it is important that we have the feedback and have the information we need to make a decision as, as your board here.
And I, I, I guess I would ask that, that you go back to your team and look at that and if you could provide us some information in the Friday board update, what, what scheduling you think you could get us that data together and be ready for a presentation.
And while this is important, are we going to revisit safety?
I think we do. I mean, I think I would like to see that also as a.
So are you saying use both, use that, use that session for both or two separate sessions? I think the, while I would want the target audience to be of both, I think some people have an investment in one topic over the other, an interest. And I want to give ample time to let people hear what we have to present and to also hear what they have to say.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess I would, I would like to see that, you know, as part of what you put forward to include the safety program. Depending on how we set that up, you know, and how long we want to go. I mean, we went an hour and 30 minutes, about, hour and 25 minutes.
Yeah, it was closer to two hours.
Yeah, it was hour forty-five minutes. Hour forty-five.
Yeah, it was almost two hours.
Hour forty-five. You know, we, we might be able to step up some of that a little bit and maybe do both of them on the same night. I don't know if that's a possibility or not. But something to think about and look at, if, if, if that's an option or if we need to split them when, when we can do each. Anything else on, on the facilities and community engagement follow-up? Thank you. I think it was a good discussion and I think we keep moving forward in that direction. New business.
All right, new business. Item A, recommend the approval of accepting the retirements of Greg Kennison, a middle school science teacher, Eva Trozol, educational aide.
You have a motion?
No, I'll make the motion.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Kennison was my science teacher. I taught with his wife. I love that family. I'm sorry to see him go. But, yeah, I guess he's right. He's a greener pastor. I'm sure he's excited about his retirement.
It, it is exciting to see people excited about the next step on their own personal journey and the next chapter in life, but certainly the appreciation for the commitment and dedication of all the students they've had over the years, absolutely.
Other questions, comments? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item B, recommend the approval of accepting resignations of Jenna Nelson as a girls' JV soccer coach, effective February 2nd. And then Julia, Julia, I'll get it out. Ju- Julia, I have that right. Solde from Nemen Kopic, she's an art teacher and that would be effective March 23rd, 2018.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, Jolene and Teresa?
We hate to lose Julie, Julia, Mrs. Solde. She's been a great addition at Nemen Kopic, doing a terrific job with the students just as a, a family need for movement. And so we're not going to lose her this time, but she's been a great, a great addition.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item C, recommend employment for the following certified positions for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork. And that begins with Cindy Woldermuth that we had introduced earlier today and that's a .5 middle school social studies position.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, Teresa and Corinne. Any questions, comments?
Did she used to teach in our district? I see she's at Step Eight.
Yes, she's taught here and she taught outside of our, our district. And then she came back.
She's been a long-term assistant at work.
Yes, she's been subbing for multiple years. Yes, they've been an active family in our district.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item D, recommend employment of the following classified position for the 2017-18 school year pending proper certification and paperwork. And that's Ashley Harmon, we are a cafe server at Nemen Kopic and that's at a Step One. She's just starting and we met her this evening as well.
Motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, Jolene and Teresa? Any discussion?
This is a position that's available because of a prior resignation.
Resignation or termination?
It's termination.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I was.
All right. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the following changes in contract for Dawn Bigglesburger, uh, vetted February 12th, 2018. And that moves from a three-hour cafe server to a four-hour cafe server. And that's just the hourly rate of pay that stays the same. And then moving from a four-and-a-half hour bus aide to a 3.25 hour bus aide, hourly rate of pay staying the same.
Looking for a motion?
I'll motion, second.
You have a motion and a second, Corinne and Teresa? Any discussion, questions?
Dawn is working there at Nemen Kopic Elementary and there's the increase of some time for her to be that three-hour server, which they, they need the additional hour and they were able to work that out with the busing for her to reduce her time as the aide. And the students still receive the support that they need.
And this is at Nemen?
This is at Nemen Kopic.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item F, recommend approval of the following substitute positions for the 2017-18 school year pending proper certification and paperwork. Alexandra Linden as a substitute teacher, long-term for music and band. We met him this evening. And then Renee Matsunami, who is a substitute teacher's aide.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, Jolene and Corinne? Any discussion? Any none, please call roll.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item G, recommend approval of the following supplemental positions for the 2017-18 school year pending proper certification and paperwork, ask for the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second from Andy and Teresa? Any discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to mention that our baseball and tennis had been approved prior. So this is, you know, for these spring meetings.
And this completes our spring news?
At this time, yes.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Sorry, yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item H, recommend approval of the following game workers for the 2018 school year, ask for the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, myself and Teresa? Any discussion, questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
That motion is approved.
Item I, recommend approval to date, to update the athletic support services paid for the following events and that's ask for the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second from Andy and Jolene? Any questions or comments?
I would just comment that this is an increase due to moving from dual meets to those that are tri-quads. So the rates are slightly different.
They're longer.
It's a much longer day.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
And Mr. Spano?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item J, recommend approval of the construction contract between Grunts, General Contracting, TIP Pride Association and TIP City Exempt Village Schools for Phase One items for the stadium at TIP City Park. And that's Attachment Five.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, myself and Jolene? Discussion?
I have three questions. Um, just a general question. What is the current function of TIP Pride?
I would, my, my first reaction would be that they maintain that they are fundraising arm, that they are the private sector for the stadium initiative and that there is a combined committee that they refer to as the construction committee that has representation with our, our school district as well as the city and then TIP Pride, meaning the community of volunteers.
I mean, I would, I would further say that that construction committee was chaired by Gary, our district. And we had participation from the various other entities. But that the construction committee was, was overweighted by the school district with, with representation. And I would concur, their primary responsibility is fundraising.
Well, yeah, because I remember when we voted to form TIP Pride, they initially started off as a fundraising organization and it's gone way beyond fundraising, right? Because they got a construction committee, turf, bleachers, press box, all these other things. So I guess I was just confused on when that line changed.
Well, I don't know that they've got a bleacher company responsibility or a press box responsibility. They're selling sponsorship for various pieces of that, which, again, is fundraising. So I see that as, you know, an asset that they can use to fundraise with. The construction, I see that, you know, I guess when you sign up to be the fundraiser, you certainly want to be a participant, if you will, in what is needed or how much money they, I'm, I'm being asked to raise. I mean, if, if the construction committee came back and said, we wanted blah, 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 and it's now a $15 million project, I don't think that the TIP Pride would have maybe signed up for that responsibility.
Sure.
So to allow them to be a participant and understand what was in the scope of the project seemed reasonable to me.
Right, I just, they started off initially as a fundraising organization and now it's gone beyond that. That was, my question was, when did it change? That was my only question.
Again, I mean, I think I provided what their, their participation was from the standpoint of fundraising and making sure that they weren't overburdened with fundraising for something that, you know, maybe was flawed, maybe wasn't needed. Made sure that they were a part of understanding what is the scope of the project.
Well, I guess as a board, since we're sort of working together because we have this great relationship where the city owns the land, you know, we're building the stadium. TIP Pride is our fundraising. you know, we're building the stadium. TIP Pride is our fundraising organization that's raising that money. They've done an amazing job and we're very appreciative of all of the volunteers because, I mean, it's hundreds of hours of work what these people have put into it. They've done far more than any other group ever has for TIP City. So, I mean, hats off, kudos, congratulations, all of the above. As a board, have we ever given them benchmarks to, so that we sort of know what's in their funnel, what they have coming, that type of thing?
I think, I mean, I'll speak to that a little bit. I think they signed up to do everything they can to make sure that the district didn't have to put any of their money into the, into the project. They signed up for 4.9 million that we are at today to do the project. Did we say, "You need to have so much money before we could start?" No. We've had a number of meetings. We've had a number of updates. They've talked to us about how they're doing on the project. They have told us the...
But I've never seen a dollar amount of what exactly has been raised. I've seen commitments, sales funnels, trying to get this person, trying to get this person. I haven't seen an actual dollar amount of what's in their checking account.
Have you asked for that?
Yes, I have.
To TIP Pride, and they have provided?
I've asked for that document. And maybe I'm asking the wrong person.
I actually thought she would have that this evening.
Maybe I'm asking the wrong person.
Here you go.
Thank you!
She may receive.
Yay! Awesome.
So what I think I'm hearing...
My point in asking this is, okay, thank you. You know, at the end of the day, we all want to be successful. What we don't want is, we have all this positive momentum going right now because the new board, one of our focuses was engaging the community. We just had this event at LT Ball. We have, you know, we're going in the right direction. I kind of relate this to the OSFC, OSFC thing where we didn't explain it well to the community. So I just want to make sure that the community thinks that we're being transparent with everything that we're going to do with this contract. I, I don't want to go in reverse because we're, as a new board, we're making so many strides in gaining the trust and respect of the community. I don't want to lose that. So I feel like it's very important that we're upfront with everything about TIP Pride. We want them to be successful, obviously. But, you know, we never said, "You need to raise 50% of the money or 75 or 80% before we move forward." We never gave them a benchmark. So I just don't want in three years to be having the conversation of, "What do we do now?" Nobody wants to have that conversation, but it has to be brought up.
And I will add to that, that it feels like we're going to approve stadium money before we're, before we're approving money to improve classrooms. And I have a real, just hard time approving this before I'm going to say key fobs, you know, or security cameras, or air conditioning, or new windows, like. I agree that that stadium needs work, but do I agree that that stadium needs work before our classrooms need work? I would be hard pressed.
Can I speak on this?
Yes.
That's a yes, thank you.
I agree with you, believe in the schools, and that's why we formed TPA, because we were going to use zero tax monies. And that would leave you guys more opportunity, open time to do the buildings and new schools. And that's exactly what they're doing. We're not spending any of our money. If you look at the premier contract, which is a $750,000 that you'll be approving tonight, is a contract that is for athletic facilities only. If you look at the verbiage in the contract, it exactly states that it needs to go to athletic facilities. So therefore, it can't go to schools, it can't go to equipment or any coaches' contracts or anything like that. This is something that we've had for years here at Tippecanoe that has already been invested into athletic facilities as like the soccer or the softball and baseball dugouts, the track facilities, and also our tennis facilities. So this is money that is not going to interfere with your guys moving forward in school buildings or levies or anything like that. If you also read the contract, we are only liable for that $750,000 and the TIP City, or TIP Pride Association is liable for the rest of them, liable for the rest of that. So if they can't come up with their portion of it, that is on them, it is not on the school. What we, what is on us is that $750,000 that is guaranteed through premier health money. So as much as you say, I completely agree with you. We've been a year and a half in talks with this. TPA has had open forum meetings in the libraries and that. People chose not to come or haven't heard or so forth. But they've tried to communicate and show the pictures and what is planned and stuff like that. TIP City did sit on the Construction Committee, but they made no major decisions. They were there to listen because they are 100% trying to fundraise and making an honest attempt at fundraising without using tax dollars. That's why that group was formed and that's what they're working at doing as well. But I think it was fair for them to sit in those meetings so that we didn't come back to them and say, "Hey, we want a $20 million stadium, go at it." So, so yes, I think they needed to have representation in those meetings to say, "Okay, this is, is a reliable source." And that's a reasonable amount that we can fundraise.
I would add to that as well. He did mention, "We have used this money for," let's try. "We have used this money for the baseball dugouts, softball dugouts, the press box there, the backstop there. We have used this money for the tennis court reconstruction." So we have used this money for athletic facilities for the previous 10 years. I've been in my position for eight years now and my plan has always been, take care of those. Let's get a plan in place for what we need to do with the stadium. And then when that plan's in place, let's get this turf in. It's not a safe surface for these kids. The track wasn't a safe surface. The dugout blew over from potential tornado. We had tennis courts that had cracks throughout where we had to fill them with rubber. So everything we, we have done with those premier dollars has been geared towards our athletic facilities and the safety of those facilities. And what we are recommending tonight, again, is the safety of our athletes and in the spirit of what we have done the previous 10 years. And I agree with you completely too. You saw my passion as far as what we need to do with buildings. I hear you. But I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time with this. When I make a recommendation to Dr. Kumpf to present it to the board, it's not just me saying, "I want to do this, let's do this." It's well thought out. There's discussions with all affected parties. And it is, it is a recommendation that takes into account everything we've just discussed. It's not just Gary wants us. So that's where I'm at on all of this.
I just think that we could have had this information to present to people at our facilities meeting. So we could say, "Hey, we're talking about what we're going to do to schools. This is what we're going to do with our facilities." Because we have this separate pot of money, it's not going to take, we're not choosing athletics over school safety and classroom environments.
I guess maybe I misunderstood then the February 22nd or 20th meeting. I thought we were staying away from athletics.
I did too. I did too. And I, but I didn't know that this was going to come up before we vote on that.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
You know, there was an email that went out on February 7th.
Yeah, there was.
That explained all that and saying this was going to be on tonight's agenda.
And I, I guess I assumed that the, since we did the community engagement, that that would have sped up and not, and not occurred. Whenever, I mean, we have no idea.
What I know now is we have a timeline.
Right.
That if this doesn't get approved tonight and it gets pushed back a month, two months. Well, we could still finish, but if we would start a month late, the first month of our season is going to have to be moved elsewhere. We're losing revenue. JD's losing revenue. The sports are losing revenues. That was on, so we're at a deadline of, we're going to get this done. We got to move now.
And that's why I asked the question because I exactly related to why the levy fell, because we didn't do a good job of explaining those OF, OSFCs, OSFC dollars. Can you tell I'm nervous? So I want to make sure that, like I said, I don't want to lose this positive momentum of the community. And I wanted everyone to say this because when people voted for me, they looked me dead in the eye and said, "Will you ever pay for a stadium before schools?" And I said, "Uh, no." So I can't go back on my word. And we're not, that's my point. And we're not going back on our word. So it was important for me to, I wasn't trying to be a bad guy in bringing this up.
No.
I want the public to understand, we're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul. Because today, I thought that. I myself thought that. I said, "Holy heck, we're paying for a stadium before schools. That's absolutely, positively not okay with me. No way, no how." So all day long, I'm making phone calls, making phone calls, making phone calls because I owe it to the people who voted for me to do my job. So I've spent the whole weekend talking about this, researching this, getting answers. And now I understand that we're not robbing from Peter to save Paul, to, to pay Paul. And that was very important to me. And I don't want to, I don't want to be untransparent to the community. So that's why I brought it up. I just wanted to get it out there so that we're on the same page and there's no questioning what we're doing. That was my point.
Greatly appreciated.
You've done a great job. JD's done a good job. TIP Pride's done a good job. But also now that we are giving this money, I feel like we do need to have some benchmarks or, you know, get a bank statement. This is the first statement that I've seen. Because I don't want to have this conversation in three years. What are we going to do now? So we need to benchmark this or do something. That's my point.
Everything you're saying, Teresa, is legitimate. And I know I share those concerns as well. And what I, that I heard is Gary would be the person from the school board that will be in charge of this contract with Brunz. And that the money that is coming from the contract or from our agreement with the hospital is, has to be used for facilities. They just need it now in order to move forward.
Get the turf, right. I understand that, absolutely.
And in no way do we think a stadium is more important than our facilities. I think our discussions tonight have, have made that very clear, that
Correct.
facilities are more important. This is going to get this project going for TIP Pride. And the money is, is still there to address our contract needs with our teachers and our, it's not permanent improvement money that
Correct.
is being promoted.
But, you know, as a board, we do need to have some kind of benchmarks or something for TIP Pride because I don't want to, I don't want to all of a sudden, three years from now, say, "Oh, that just happened. I wasn't keeping track of it. I wasn't being responsible by knowing what was going on." And all of a sudden, hey, we have to write a $3 million check, go to our taxpayers and say, "We're going to fund the stadium now." So there has to be some kind of benchmark or something from the board with TIP Pride. I just feel like that's irresponsible of us not to do that. And it gives them something to work towards too, kind of like us with our strategic vision. We're setting these dates because you have to have a goal or you're not working towards anything. So I don't see a problem with that. We just haven't done it.
Well, I think that it's reasonable to ask that, but I don't know that they can guarantee how much they're going to raise in the timeframe that we might establish with them. And hopefully, moving forward with this will help the momentum move along so that we can continue to see progress made on the project and other donors will come forth. The community needs to come forth and, and support this. We are all part of this community and it is a community stadium. So we are supporting TIP Pride as individual citizens and taking this money that is earmarked for athletics and moving it so that they can move forward on this first phase.
I, I
I don't think we're saying anything different.
And besides, and besides the money too, I want to make point that we're also voting on Brunz and accepting Brunz, who's done an unbelievable job.
Oh, nothing but awesome things to say for Brunz.
It's a TIP community company in that they've saved us money already on this first phase. And they're, they continue to look at ways to save me more money. So obviously, Phase One here is the turf with the, the permanent fencing on the side and the retaining wall to actually lengthen our soccer field to an official soccer-sized field. So that's in Phase One. And Phase Two would be the other $3.8 million raised to complete Phase Two of everything else. That's the locker rooms, concessions, stands, press box, and scoreboard. So obviously, that's their goal is to raise that 3.8 by next time around this time so that way we can finish the stadium. But also, it is contingent on what happens tonight and then from here on with fundraising. But they are from this point in, because the construction plan is complete and we know who we're working with, we know what it's going to look like, we have a plan. So the construction part as a committee is no, no longer in existence, the construction team. So basically now, it's Gary working with Brunz and now they are 100% fundraising and fundraising only.
Right. And I felt like before, because the school did not have any money invested, that was their deal. That was, they were the, they were officially started as the private fundraising group. But now, now that we're giving this money, I feel like we need to be the sales manager, so to speak. We need to give them...
Yeah, and we are, yeah.
Yeah, so we need to give them benchmarks. That's my only point.
Sure.
I mean, that's all I'm saying. And I wanted the community to know that we weren't, that's all.
I agree.
Okay.
Point there.
Thank you.
I certainly agree with putting everything on the record, just like you said. Absolutely, the reason we make these decisions, we need to have this discussion, make sure it's all out there. I know one question that people have is, you know, why the field before the bleachers? And I think you've answered it a lot already, but I did want to touch on that topic a little bit.
Well, absolutely. I mean, basically, you, you look at, the nucleus is the center part, right, and you build out. So we're doing the field first because of safety for the kids. We do, we're doing this for the kids and safety. If you Google dock the stadium right now, it's an embarrassment, what you just see the picture. And if you actually walk across that field, it's even worse with the divots and the holes. I mean, it's a matter of time before you have torn ACLs and ankles. I mean, I, it's hard for me scheduling quality, high-quality teams. We're talking about conferences, wanting to get the center bills and beaver picks in here. Indian Hill, who won state championship last year, refuses to come to TIP City because of our field. And every time I try to schedule, "We need you, we want to play," "No, you come to us or do you have turf field yet or better surface?" "No, sorry, we don't." And then we're not interested. So the safety of the kids is that, that's why. I mean, we can go several years. I lost, like he said, our athletic budget is contingent on gates receipts. So if we lose any home games, and that, that cuts our budget. And now, we, we don't come really ask the board for any money because we do everything off of gate fees and that. So if we're cutting that out, I'm losing money. Also, senior years, it's hard. You think it's packed tonight. Wait till if we move some home games, because we don't have a safe facility and that, how the seniors are going to feel and their parents in here complaining, "Why didn't I get to play my senior year at home in the stadium?" So last year too, we had our boys sectional championship soccer. It was supposed to be home against Bel Brook. It rained all day that day. And we had to move it to Bel Brook because the state said, "We're not allowing kids to play on that surface field." So we lost home field advantage. So that's what's going to happen here. GWALK has changed middle school football games to seventh and eighth grade same night now, starting at 4 o'clock. No longer can we play middle school football up at Howe because, one, there's no lights and, and two, the surface isn't here. So this turf field is going to allow us to move middle school football games down to the stadium where we're going to have adequate seating on both sides and with lights. So there's a lot playing into that. And this just isn't football and soccer field. OME Competitions, one of our big invitationals for band, they host 14 teams now. They try, they find a hard time finding quality teams coming because they're like, "We're not going to go to that surface in that area." Last year or two years ago, they were sucking water off the field during the invitational. So this is going to guarantee them getting more quality teams for their invitationals, which is going to bring more money into the band competitions. Right now is a beautiful day out and baseball and softball were out, but say that field was a little bit too muddy or wood where they couldn't get out. Baseball and softball now, right after school, could go down to that stadium, take ground balls and hit BP on that turf inside the stadium. So track could be out there running sprints. So it's going to get multi-use and it's just not two sports. Everybody thinks, "Oh, it's just football and soccer." It's going to be, it's going to be a stadium for the whole community and for multiple sports. So I, I think it's, it's time. The surface isn't safe. And that, and like I said, when teams are saying, "No, we're not going to come play you," it's unfortunate. So, but we could go a couple of years with the turf and, and that, even if TPA was having a struggle time or that, at least we know that the kids are safe. And that. And I think, somebody made a comment at the very first meeting when I had about the stand set, "We're worrying about the entertainers before we're worrying about the, the fans." And that, and to think that the kids are just entertainers is beyond me. So, but yeah, I think, I think our job, what we do is for the kids. And if we are spending money and stuff, it should be in for the, for the kids, unfortunately.
Can I jump in as well, to answer a little bit more? In my workings with Brunz, we looked at both options. Stands, press box, scoreboard as a phase versus field as a phase. And in their professional judgment, they felt most comfortable moving forward with the turf, knowing our timeframe, what we had to do to be done by August 1st, we can start the seasons. So a lot of the decision also went from listening to them, who we are working with, and they're do, they do this all the time. And their feedback saying, "We're really comfortable with the turf." We start with bleachers and press box and scoreboard, we're not sure we're going to be done. So that was part of it as well, too.
And that was one pushing very hard to do stands first. Me and JD had quite a few conversations that were elevated with regard to what we do first and...
Not personal, business.
Yeah, exactly. Not personal, it's business. That's why I was...
When Brunz came back and said that they weren't comfortable, I mean, I had to concede that if we were going to move forward, we had to do
Correct.
do the field.
And we do have a lot of confidence in Brunz. That, that in itself is a gift for our district because they are extremely committed to this community and they have a strong name and, and a good reputation. So that, that is a positive piece for us.
Now, we thought about doing turf last year at this point and, and we, we thought that it was going to raise expenses, extra costs by putting in turf first. And Brunz assured us that that's not the case, that there wouldn't be an additional cost by doing the field first and then going to the stands and that. So.
Comment back there?
Hey, you're not going to pay for a scoreboard, are you?
What's that?
I said, "You're not going to pay for..."
Oh, and that scoreboard, we've already bought three of the scoreboards with the money that TPA's...
Well, I'm just saying, side effects goes out. Have you used them yet?
We're not doing side effects.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. It's a whole nother ball, ball of wax.
We, we want to make sure that our, our kids are seeing every dime of advertisement that we sell and marketing. When you use third companies like that, we don't see a lot of money.
Well, after the first three to five years, then.
That's what they say.
You're responsible.
That's what they say, yeah.
Well, I, I just want to add that Mr. Stevens did a great job, um, talking to me on the phone today forever and explaining where the money is coming from because I was really.
Corinne, you were my short phone call.
Oh, was that a short phone call?
I must have been after her because this wasn't a nice meeting.
He was like line item. I loved it. And because it is a, um, I guess I can't vote athletics over academics or our teachers and stuff. And Mr. Stevens, I loved it.
Well, I'm just sorry that I didn't get that kind of information out to the board.
I must have been after her because I, my phone call wasn't as.
Well, yours was, yours was the shortest.
Mine was like, yeah, no, like.
Yeah.
And I was after you. Okay, yours was even worse. Yes, thanks a lot, Corinne.
So it's good that we all talked to you. We have you on the speed dial, but I want to follow up on what Corinne is saying is let's use what we've learned, which is how can we make sure that this message goes out to clearly defend these steps?
Yeah. That's why I brought it up tonight on camera.
As an uninformed taxpayer, it's hard to see a bulldozer on that field.
Yes.
And send your kid to LT Ball. And that's.
Oh, and that's the nicest call.
And that, yeah, that's, but that's a hard thing to see.
Correct. Yeah.
A lot of us don't know that, so.
Right. And I didn't know that until today. I mean, and I'm a board member, so think how I felt. So, you know, at least we all did our due diligence. I feel good about that.
Can I, can I ask a question quick? Um, so is the money being paid back or we're just paying that out of this?
Mr. Stevens?
So what we're going to, so we've looked into a lease purchase agreement, which means talking to a bank. And, uh, a lease, uh, lease purchase means debt and debt needs interest. And so we were told a estimate that the project, the total cost of the loan would be $905,000. That did not sit well with me and it did not sit well with members of the board. And so as a former auditor, uh, there was another option that I knew of. It's an advance. We have done an advance before from the general fund to the food service fund. But this is an advance that we would do from the general fund. We actually have $74,800 and something, something cents in our premier health account right now. We would need to advance the remaining 700 and, I'm sorry, $676,000 from the general fund to the 003 premier health fund. But that 003, once we do that advance, we then have a record that we have to submit to the Miami County Auditor's Office every year with our budget that shows the money that 003 fund owes the general fund. And that will show on our budget that we approve, our, that we approve every January to show how much money is left to be paid to the general fund. When it is all said and done, we will take nine years to pay back an interest-free loan with premier health money to the general fund at a cost of $0 in interest to save the taxpayers, to, to save $154,000. That general, that advance will be reviewed by the Auditor of State's office every financial year, every financial audit to make sure that we are currently paying it back. It is not something that will just disappear off the books. It will be there until it is gone and repaid.
Because in eight to 12 years, you have to replace the turf. And so I was getting kind of worried if we're using 10 years worth of money, we're going to have to replace it.
It will, it will not be the same cost at all.
I understand that.
Yes.
And then also facility rentals, because obviously facility rentals money will go back into, obviously we'll have a pot that will try to gain a little bit of interest over time. So that way when we do get to 14 to 15 years is actually the life expectancy now because we're getting a shock pad as well. Um, so when we get to that 14, 15, it's going to be $350,000 to renew. Um, so you're talking a, a big difference. Um, and if we do, if we plan right and, and put that money into that offside with the Philly, uh, facility rentals, that will be taken care of and we won't be going back looking at any additional tax money or anything like that, so.
We are not, we are not looking to track these taxpayer dollars for the facilities.
This board is committed to be transparent and whatever communication we can develop to get that message out will be in favor of us always doing. Our commitment is to our teachers and students and facilities. This is part of our program. The money has to be used for this purpose. We're just passing it through.
And to be clear, there, there are no academic needs that won't be met as we're doing this.
That's my first understanding.
And what I am hearing very strongly, which means a great deal to me, that instructional facilities is a very high priority of the board and we do want to see that through.
Any other discussion? Very none, please call roll.
Hold on. Yeah.
It was a long conversation. You probably lost your paper.
I got to find it. That's my job. I believe Mr. Spano was our first.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
And motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Good discussion. Item K recommend approval to purchase an eight-passenger 2018 Ford Transit 150 van from Bold Townsend Ford for a price of $27,233.50. This purchase is through the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Cooperative and will be paid with permanent and permanent funds.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
And a motion and second. Teresa and Corinne, any discussion?
Uh, I just want to mention that our old van is a 1997. It's 21 years old and we plan to put it on govdeals.com to sell it. If anybody would like to buy that.
If anybody has $5.
Five dollars.
We should get a dude there.
It's a really old van.
We'll be surprised.
Really?
Hey, good job keeping that running, yeah.
We got a great mechanic.
He's the best, too. He is the best. That's in best preserve.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item L recommend accepting the lawn care program bid from Evergreen Lawn Care Incorporated in an yearly amount of $48,600 for a two-year contract, 2018 and 2019.
I'll make the motion. Second.
And motion and second. Teresa and Corinne, any discussion?
I just want to mention that I know there were multiple bids, but, uh, this is the one that, that came in, uh, for the winning bid in Evergreen Lawn Care. It does have a strong commitment to our district.
They've had it the past two years. They were off four years prior to that, but before that they were the only ones that done it, so.
Does this include snow removal?
No, we do our own snow removal.